We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? All right, we will begin with the superintendent and student member reports.
All right.
Now that it works.
So, there are still positions available. Please make sure you're, if you're interested, www.smcps.org, hit the join our team button. All the available positions are there. Put an application in. There's a great opportunity to join St. Mary's County Public Schools. And the positions are dwindling as we speak. We had a fantastic time last week. We convened the superintendent's Student Leadership Advisory Council for the very first time. And that's all of us gathered together under the stewardship of our student member of the board. And I wonder if, would you like to share?
Yeah, sure, I can share right now.
Okay. Just about this.
So, I was very, very excited to start Slack for the year because we've kind of been planning as a steering committee, which is our kind of executive board, for a few months now for this very first meeting. And the focus that Dr. Smith and I kind of wanted to take this year is kind of like how our learning environments impact us and how we impact our learning environments. And, you know, just being aware and being accountable for our own actions, keeping our peers accountable, et cetera. And so we had some really, really productive conversations about what's really, really great about all three of our high schools. And I learned some super cool things about the other two high schools, because I attend Lenartown. So, I learned some pretty cool things about Chopticon and Great Mills and what they're doing there. And like Great Mills on their student IDs, they have these barcodes. And I think we all have these barcodes, but they specifically have started using those barcodes to get like student discounts for things like school supplies, which I thought was really, really neat. And Chopticon has some really great stuff, especially like, they were really proud of their athletics department and their brand new, what is it called? Press box. And, yeah, their wonderful stadium. And Lenartown, we just talked about how we're always great or strong, you know? And we have a token economy called Strong Bucks. And that has been really, really great at our school. I know I've noticed that myself. And then we also talked about some things that have maybe been not the best at our schools thus far. And we talked about how we think we can improve upon them. We talked a whole bunch about school safety and what we can do to kind of increase everyone's, you know, feelings of safety when they're at school, because that's what we want for everyone. It's hard to focus on learning when you don't feel safe, because you know, that's like a, that's like a essential need, right? You have to feel safe in order to do anything else. And so we talked a whole lot about that. And Dr. Smith kind of walked us through some things. And, yeah, so that was a really, really great meeting last Wednesday. And our next one is going to be in January. And so in between last week and January, we tasked our Slack students from each school to meet back up with their principals and kind of talk about how they're going to implement what we talked about on the school level, because that's the whole goal. You know, we don't want it to just go nowhere. We want it to go back to our schools and really make a difference. So, yeah, I have a lot of hope for this year.
And the, and the first meeting is really gathering together ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders from all three high schools, giving them an opportunity to interact with one another, because oftentimes ninth graders don't really interact with seniors. And then interact with students from all the other schools. So, the first meeting is always kind of an icebreaker and a focus setting. And what came out strongly was the need for communicating all the things that are going right in the high schools, because everybody knows if something isn't going well. That seems to be the story that, you know, bad news travels around the world before good news can get out of bed, that kind of thing. So, there was a lot of discussion about that. And certainly, personal accountability will be the theme throughout this entire year. So, it was really great, it was a really great first meeting. Farm to School. Now, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, because I know probably people are going to talk about it, but we do have some fantastic images and a great information. It really was really wonderful this particular year. And so I know, are you going to speak on that, or is?
Yeah, I was, but go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 so we'll come.
Why don't we do it now?
I'll say the burgers were really good.
Why don't we do it now and then I don't have to speak at the end?
Right.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
Farm to School was fantastic. We had fresh meat from Lumpkin Farm.
Yeah.
And the Secretary of Agriculture did a visit yesterday.
Justin Barton, Barton Felder.
At Oakville Elementary. I met up with him there. Really a nice man, but he did take a chance, or take some time over there and flip some burgers for the kids. I was able to have lunch there with the students and with the Secretary of Agriculture. And also Jamie Riley from Farm Bureau, our president from the Farm Bureau, was there. And we had, you know, like I said, the fresh meat. There was fresh salad, sweet potatoes, broccoli, and of course, the, you know, the milk or water. But everything was local grown and brought there and prepared by our great food service.
But the cool thing was the trailer.
Okay, well, you haven't gotten there yet. I was, I was hooked on the first. But so, so the trailer, the Maryland Agriculture Education Foundation, along with the school system paid like 25%, the Farm Bureau and other donations paid the rest to have this trailer brought to the different schools. And it was an educational opportunity for the students to all get a chance to go through and do hands-on experiments, learn about food, learn about, you know, how things are grown, how you can use these products in, you know, different ways, whether it's making glue or, you know, that's the one that I was here for with the fifth graders. Very engaged, they loved it. And so, you know, it was, it was a really nice experience for them. I know Ms. Bailey came with me to Letty Marshall Dent the week before to see the kids. But then we were there, I was there yesterday to go, go through it again. And, you know, I think it was like kindergarten then was also going through when I was there.
Yeah, they had targeted lessons for each grade level, yeah, and activities, yeah. It was really, it was really great and a fantastic partnership and highlights certainly all of the diverse opportunities that they, that we have done here in Southern Maryland. It was great. We are entering into the theatrical season, as it were. October is going to be, is highlighted by the Chopticon Braves, the Brave, the Playhouse, Brave House. Tomorrow night, they have, is opening night for As You Like It, a reinterpretation of the fantastic Shakespearean comedy. November will feature Great Mills High School, where they will do Radium Girls. And then in December, Lenartown High School will be doing Macbeth. So, we've got a double dose of Shakespeare and then some really fantastic contemporary play highlighting a piece of history that, that we need to spend a little time unpacking and understanding. So, great stuff. So, it starts tomorrow night. I'll be there tomorrow night. I think the majority of people are going on, that we have on staff are going to be going on Friday night. But anybody who wants to join me, we'll see if we can, I think we can get pretty good seats, so. This weekend, the STEAM Festival is happening over at the, at the fairgrounds from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Be there or be square. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics, a great, a great partnering. Again, a great opportunity for some learning labs where highlight hands-on activities for students of all ages. So, that's a fantastic thing we shall be going to, which leads us to October. There are only two days left until the end of the first marking period. So, we are 25% of the way through the academic school year as of Friday. And Friday is a two-hour early dismissal, so that our fantastic dedicated teachers can gather together the flurry of assignments and materials that are handed in at the very end of the day, probably on Friday, and then work on putting together all that information for our report cards. And then we will start into the month of November and into the second marking period. And so really, that kind of gets us to what we've been, oh my gosh, what we've been doing. So, we've encountered people, we saw, Mrs. Bailey called me as I was leaving Letty Marshall Dent, but we had gone through and we've been visiting, visiting, visiting schools, as was Monis' desire to go and see every single fifth grader. And we are over halfway there. And so I shall turn it back to my counterpart at the other side of the dais.
Thank you, thank you. And you made me very nervous with that whole two days until the marking period ends.
Oh, my gosh, right.
It's okay. I'm on top of it. I got it.
The Schoology email is coming out. Ding, ding, ding.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, so, oh, first of all, I'd just like to highlight, I did go to the STEAM Festival last year. And it was a great time. There were lots of puzzles there to just like fidget with and try to figure out. And I have to say, a seventh grade student beat me at one of them, and that honestly made me happy. I was like, you know what, good for you, better at math than I am. That's grand. But yeah, so on to our main topic of today. So, we've kind of hit a lot of schools since the last meeting. We've hit five schools.
Yep, five schools in two weeks.
So, the first school is Greenveen Hills Elementary School, and they got me a T-shirt, y'all.
Oh, look at that, she's rolling out with some of that school swag.
Yeah. Some of that school swag. I will be wearing this. And yeah, so they got me a T-shirt and they wrote these very, very kind thank you letters to both myself and Dr. Smith. And that was awesome. Just wanted to highlight that off the bat. So, the Greenveen Hills students, it was a really great time meeting with them. It's kind of like a smaller, you know, environment. And they have a lot of great things to highlight about their school. So, they have a news team, and it's called the Owl News Team, because they're the Owls there, right? And it's made up of students who get to share, you know, relevant news. And it's a really great opportunity for students, you know, to work on voice, as we've been talking about.
Communication?
Everything's connected. And kind of in that same theme of them being the Owls, they have these tickets called Give a Hoots. And they are kind of a reward system, a token economy again, for being the three Rs. But a lot of schools have three Rs, but Greenveen Hills has a unique third R. So, it's respectful, responsible, and resilient, because they really want to emphasize resilience at, at Greenveen Hills. So, I thought that was pretty cool. And all of the students seemed very, very passionate about that, so it was awesome. So now, what's the Owl's name? His name is Ozzy. And sometimes their mascot comes and visits them, so that was pretty cool. And then they have Safety Patrol, which is at many of our elementary schools. And I never got to do Safety Patrol, so that is very, very exciting to me. And they were, again, very, very passionate about that. I guess the students really, really want to be on Safety Patrol.
It is an earned position.
Yeah, it's a very big deal.
Position of respect.
A position of respect, and they take it very seriously. Like, that is important to them. And that was really great to see. They also have a math team, as many of our elementary schools do. And I have to say, shout out, I was on my school's math team when I was in fifth grade.
Nice.
Yeah, and we got first place at the Math Team Challenge, so I just have to shout out Evergreen. But yeah, so Greenveen Hills has a math team. And then they also do this thing called Happy Post-it Notes. And this, we talked about this for a while, because this is just so intriguing, because we do talk about using our voices for kindness, so they beat us to it. And so essentially, they just write like super generic, like kind messages on Post-it Notes, just small, you know, "I hope you have a great day today," something like that. And they put them up on these bulletin boards outside. And if someone is like walking past that and they just say, "You know what, I need this message today." They can take it off and take it with them. And that's really awesome. And then they also leave them, you know, elsewhere, on a friend's desk or in a cubby and things like that. And that was just really great to see, because they're, you know, actively spreading positivity within their school environment. So, I really love that. And then they also have a recycling team. It's important. Those are the other three Rs, you know, the ones in the circle.
Right.
Recycle, reduce, reuse, recycle? Yeah, there it is. So, they have a recycling team, again, and another responsibility that they take very seriously, and they love participating in. And then lastly, they have really great plays and concerts and celebrations. Like after testing and stuff, they have, you know, a celebration to, you know, mark that end of that horrible testing period where you just have to sit there for hours. So, they get to, you know, spend time outside. And overall, it was very, very visible how much they focus on resiliency and, you know, just spreading positivity at their school. So, I'd like to say thank you to Principal Fowler and our three fifth grade teachers there, Ms. Lincoln, Ms. Hart, and Ms. Bennett, for a wonderful environment. And thank you for spending an afternoon with us. And then our next school was Town Creek Elementary School. And you might not be able to see, but I went dressed as a vampire, because it was the first day of Spirit Week at Lenartown High School. And the Town Creek Terrapins had a lot to share. And I'm going to get to that soon, but they actually handed me this paper with ideas. So, it's, it's full of great things.
They were taking notes as I was taking notes, as they were all sharing.
Yeah, exactly.
They had their own reporter.
So, they all pulled up to the classroom, you know, any students who weren't already in my classroom, they pulled up with clipboards. And they were taking notes of things that they wanted to share. You know, they were all eagerly like, oh. And they were also taking notes of, you know, things they might have learned about the Board of Education or anything like that. And so, first of all, right off the bat, they just wanted to share that they have the best teachers in the world, Ms. G and Mr. Rushworth. And they have the best principal in the world, Mrs. Brenfleck. And that was just a theme. Everyone was like, yes, that is the truth. And it kind of in that same theme, they really love their big classrooms. And I did notice that as well, actually, they have very spacious classrooms. And they thought that that made it a better environment to learn in, and I completely agree. I think that was really great. And this was really great. They love to read. And I know Dr. Smith loves this, as a former English teacher. And I love this, as just a reading lover. So, they love to read for fun. Like, I know some kids were talking about the Percy Jackson series. And I keep hearing about the book Dogman, and I really need to read it, because I have not read it, and everyone keeps talking about it. And then they also really love their specials classes, so that's chorus band and strings. And then also PE and their art class and everything like that, because it's just, you know, an opportunity to get out their creative side. And then they also mentioned that they love field trips, and they would like to have more field trips. And then a big conversation that we had at Town Creek was about lunch. So, we talked about kind of like the supply chain issues that have been going on and how our food service workers are really, really great, and they're doing a great job at like, you know, making decisions swiftly when things don't grow perfectly. But the students were talking about more food choices with better choices for kids with allergies, which I thought that was, that was very conscientious of them, you know, to think about others like that. And then they were also talking about doing things on paper rather than, you know, on electronics all the time. So, I guess they want to incorporate a little bit more of that. But that was interesting to me, because, you know, they've done a lot of their school online, so that was very, very interesting. Certainly a topic of conversation, yeah. Our next school was Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School, so we visited the Dent Dolphins. And that was really great. It was last Tuesday, and it was the second day of Spirit Week for me, so I was dressed country club. And so the Dent Dolphins, they have another token economy called Dolphin Dollars. And so they can spend these Dolphin Dollars, or they earn them, I think with the three Rs, if I'm not wrong. And then for demonstrating the three Rs, which for them are respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. And so they use the Dolphin Dollars to have Bubbles, which is their mascot, the Dolphin, visit their classroom, which is super cool, having a Dolphin visit your classroom. Or they can have lunch with Principal Buckler, which Principal Buckler was telling us is actually a very popular one. They like love having lunch with her, which I thought was great. And then this one was super, super unique. They can use their Dolphin Dollars to help out Mr. Johnson, which is their head building service worker. And they really, really like love that one. Like, all of them were like, yes, I love doing that, I want to do that next week, you know? And so it's a really great opportunity to kind of have that one-on-one experience, you know, working with an adult and, you know, just bonding in that kind of sense. And I thought that was super, super unique and super cool. And they have Good Morning Dent, which is their morning broadcast every morning. And they really love doing that as students, so they get to announce to the whole school. And then repeat, Safety Patrol, again.
Big deal.
Big hit. Big hit. I wish I could have done Safety Patrol. I feel like I'm missing out. So, they really love that. And then they also have hand signals in class to communicate with their teachers. I don't remember them specifically, but they were to communicate needs and stuff. So, you know, you can raise your hand to answer a question, or maybe you're sharpening your pencil, or use the restroom, or anything like that. And so that was pretty cool, because, you know, it's like, it's a really great strategy to practice expressing ourselves and, you know, keeping that communication going. And then this one was super, super cool. They are a big proponent of author visits. So, they have already had an author visit. And then now they're going to have the author of Creepy Carrots, Aaron Reynolds, visit their Letty Marshall Dent students. So, that is super exciting, and they were all super excited about that. They all love reading as well. So, yeah, that is what we did at Letty Marshall Dent. And then this was on Monday, so this was this week. And before I talk about the next two schools, I have to highlight that this week is Red Ribbon Week. And so Monday was Hat Day, so everyone was in their hats, and I, you can see that in the pictures, actually. So, the Diner Dragons, they have a unique acronym, and it's flame, because they're the dragons, which I thought was clever. So, their five, you know, goals are focus, leadership, attendance, manners, and excellence. And they have a lot of things based around those five, you know, characteristics that they're striving for. So, they have Turkey Bowl, which is a students versus staff game. Is it, is it football or like?
Flag football.
Flag football, yeah.
Yeah, it's not tactical.
No. But they have flag football, Turkey Bowl, which is students versus staff, which is a great opportunity for, you know, the older students to kind of get to interact with the staff on a, in a, in a kind of fun way. And then similarly to that, they already had a fun run this year, and they were all talking about how much fun that was. So, that's really exciting. And then this one is very unique, the Golden Trash Can. So, this is super cool. I was taken aback by this. But so essentially, it's like the cleanest classroom, and I think it's from each grade, if I'm not wrong. But there's kind of a reward system based on the cleanest classroom, and you get a golden trash can.
You get to have the golden trash can in your, it resides in your room.
Yeah, exactly. So, that was super, super cool, a cool incentive to, you know, take care of our learning environments. And so I love that. And then they also have a talent show for their fifth grade students. And for the past couple of years, it's been virtual. But before that, I guess they had a show during the day and then another show during the evening, so that families could come and everything. So, the fifth grade students are very, very excited for that. They're planning what they're, what they're going to do for the talent show. And then they also have a mascot that gets to visit. They have Duncan the Dragon. And kind of similar to that, during the holiday season, they have two elves. And they're named Duncan and Delilah. And they just cause mischief everywhere. I don't know, they were talking about that, that was pretty cool. And then they also have a robotics club and a math team, which is pretty cool, because, you know, the focus on STEM is really awesome. But we also talked about our favorite books there as well. So, they do love reading, I will say, they do love reading. Same favorites, Diary of a Wimpy Kid, Dogman, et cetera. So, I need to read Dogman. Yeah, so yesterday, we went to Hollywood Elementary School. And so Hollywood Elementary School, they have a student council, which, right off the bat, that was super cool to hear about. And so they advise, you know, our faculty on, you know, incentives or like celebrations, ideas. So, they would, they get to pitch their ideas. And they also get to help out with, you know, counting tickets for, you know, their PBIS events and all of those kinds of incentives. And then they also have morning news, so that's pretty cool, but they have a twist. So, on Fridays, their morning news is actually a school-wide Google Meet broadcast. So, the kids who are doing it are actually like, you know, showing their faces. They're visible to everyone, so that's pretty cool, some, some more practice using our voices and, you know, presenting in front of people. So, that was super, super cool to hear about. And I guess they have an application process of sorts to get onto that. So, that was pretty cool, again, practicing advocating for ourselves. And then another couple responsibilities or like jobs that they have, book collectors. And then they have shelf sponsors, and they call it Adopt a Shelf. So, it's like a student is responsible for one shelf in the library, and they have to make sure that, you know, all the books are in line and everything's nice and neat and nothing's been vandalized or anything like that. And this is all in the media center, so it was pretty, pretty cool. And then they have three Rs, which are respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. And their rewards for these, because they have like that ticket system, are like 15 minutes rewards, because you can earn points. And then, oh, did they use Class Dojo?
They used Class Dojo.
Yeah, they used Class Dojo. That's what, and then you can earn points through that. And then you can earn rewards such as extra recess, because one of the things they said they wanted more of was recess. And then we discovered that they have a venue to gain more recess, so grand. And then Ms. Rykraft has a classroom mailbox. I guess for 13 years she's had it.
She's had, the entire time she's been there for 13 years, she's had that mailbox.
And so this is a super cool feature of her classroom, where students can communicate with her without having to, you know, do that intimidating thing where you like raise your hand in class or like go up to someone, and they can just slip a little message, and the only person who sees it is Ms. Rykraft. So, that was pretty cool. And a little thing about Hollywood Elementary School is it is the first elementary school and the first school in general that I ever attended as a student. So, this held a very special place in my heart, because I actually got to see my pre-K teacher, who is my first ever teacher yesterday, Ms. Farren. And I included a picture on the next slide, but I don't know if it loaded.
Come on. Oh, no. No, it didn't, wait.
That's okay.
Are you sure? I'll refresh.
Okay. It might be the next, next slide.
Nope.
These are our challenges.
There it is. Yeah, so this is my, my pre-K teacher. And that was kind of surreal, because she was the first ever educator that I ever, you know, had. And it's been 12 years since I've been a student at Hollywood Elementary School. So, yeah, that was just a super cool highlight of yesterday. And yeah, so that was it for school visits, and we have.
We've only got nine left.
We have nine more. Thank you.
All right. Let me get back to that. It's being cantankerous, I apologize.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't have, what, what could be added to all of that?
No, I have no idea. Okay, so we have no recognitions tonight, no public hearings, public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
All right. Brian, if you call the first person, I will read the statement. Sorry. Up to the, to the podium here. So, the Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. If you have concerns about that, please take it to the level closest to the situation and also the superintendent. We also keep in mind, sit as the appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. Let's see. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Brian will set the timer, so when you hear his, when you hear the beeper, if you don't mind wrapping up, and you may not yield your time to someone else. If you have any comments, you can give it to him, and then that way he can load it into our board docs as part of our minutes.
Understood.
Okay. You're good to go.
Good evening, members of the St. Mary's County Board of Education. My name is Vatanna Gaines. I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. Currently, my son is being bullied in school. He, if he fights back, he will be punished. If he does not fight back, he will be punished also. And with that, my concern is, basically, I need your assistance. As a parent, to effectively handle this situation, we've dealt with bullying multiple times in the, in his cycle within St. Mary's County Public Schools. And we've gone through the process and procedures, but we see that this bullying cycle is beginning to restart. So, we've gone through the schools that he was previously in. And so when we're saying this restart, I figured I'd come in and ask for help. So, thank you very much.
Elaine Deans.
Good evening, my name is Elaine Deems and I'm a special education paraeducator at Leonardtown Middle School. If there is one thing, um, made clear from the pandemic, it is the importance of our ESPs in our school system. We were called truly essential, from small group virtual learning to distributing devices, getting food to our families, maintaining safe and clean schools, ESPs went above and beyond. But I know that my ESP colleagues and I do that each and every day. Our family moved here in 2010. I was a twenty-year military spouse and a veteran in the education field. When I was hired as a paraeducator in 2013, my salary was around twenty-two thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of the current federal poverty guideline for a family of three. Ten years later, my salary is about thirty-two thousand dollars, which is the equivalent of the current federal poverty guideline for a family of five. I'm fortunate that my husband earns a good living to support our family of five because my one salary would not be enough. Most of my ESP colleagues in fact have second or third jobs just to make ends meet. One job should be enough. According to the MIT Living Wage Calculator, a living wage in Maryland for a forty-hour work week for a year for one adult and one dependent child is about seventy-two thousand dollars or thirty-four point seven four dollars per hour. And that's just for essentials. And although ESP job descriptions vary according to duty day and hours required, I wonder what a living wage for ESPs would look like. I know that my starting salary in 2013 and my current salary are not examples of a living wage. It's time that we address this. I love my job, um, in special education, I love my students. And as an ESP, my wish is for our state and local legislators and our Board of Ed, um, to recognize that ESPs provide vital services to our schools and students. We deserve to be paid salaries that provide a decent standard of living because really one job should be enough. Thank you for your time tonight.
Stephanie Barr.
Um, I am a mother of four children currently enrolled in the school system. It's come to my attention the lack of security the school system has in place and their protection of the devices in which were issued to our students. As stated on your website, the goals and priorities say, "safe and orderly environment." Emphasize and promote a safe and orderly learning and work environment. My husband and I are very strict with our children's electronic devices and their access. We have certain content blocked on our home router. We have apps installed on all of their home devices that block and alert us from anything that may be concerning. We have done what parents should do to protect their children from being exposed to things they're not yet ready to be exposed to. And with this school-issued laptop, one of my children was able to circumvent a system that has been a hundred percent solid in our home for almost a decade. He was able to go around the DNS filter, search and access multiple pornography sites on this school device. After contacting concerns, I received an email from Melissa Evans on behalf of Maureen Montgomery, stating that it was our responsibility as parents to block that content while the child is at home. That was never brought to our attention when these were issued to our students. I ignorantly trusted that the school system had the children's internet safety handled and filters were in place. Following the directions of Melissa Evans, I contacted my internet service provider and asked them if they could block the content from being accessed in our home. Where I got a response of, and I quote, "No, we don't have that capability from here. It would be blocked at the modem or router level, which my husband already has in place." Our main concern is for the parents that aren't familiar with the technology or have the capability or knowledge to access their home routers and block that content. And the parents that aren't even aware that children can access these things that they wouldn't want them to see because they have a hundred percent faith in the school system. Telling parents that the only thing they can do is call their internet provider in order to help protect their children is not okay, especially when the answer is no and it doesn't help. I contacted Gaggle and Gaggle informed me that the school-issued accounts were monitored at school, but not the device itself. No alert is in place for the students logging out of their student accounts and accessing personal accounts to circumvent the current monitoring. I also contacted the company that my husband and I currently use to protect our home devices called Bark. They provide a safety system for schools as well. They did inform me that the school can lock down these computers so our children cannot log out of the accounts and go into their personal accounts. Um, and that the school system has the ability to block web content via searches. Bark monitors the devices twenty-four seven, not just while connected to the school networks. And they have an optional parent connection where the parents are alerted for anything concerning. So it's a school system and the parents working together. Can I continue? I'm almost done. Go ahead. I have a direct contact for you if you're interested. But we have put so much power in the students' hands and made it so difficult for the parents to monitor everything. If my son hadn't willingly given me his password, we never would have known that this happened. We have to step up, take responsibility for these devices and lock them down and provide what is necessary for our children's safety. Thank you for your time.
Deb Ray.
Good evening, school board members. How are y'all today? Um, I'm Deb. Uh, when I heard, uh, Stephanie's story, I was a little surprised. Um, back in two thousand eleven, I had to ask my son when he started high school because I couldn't remember. So he started in two thousand eleven at Leonardtown. And he received, um, as part of the GIS program, he received a laptop. And, uh, at the beginning of that school year, there was actually a problem with those laptop systems that the kids were able to IM back and forth, which is great. But then also it was an open system. And even Dr. Martin Rono at the time had seen everybody's, uh, IMs back and forth. So I thought with that, that the school had addressed that, um, issue. But apparently, as things change over time, maybe something fell through the crack. And unfortunately, uh, we just heard the story that happened. Uh, I encourage you to look for ways to lock down the systems. Um, I'm a, uh, defense contractor and one of the things, you know, I work from home. And so like one of the things that my company does is, um, we have to log into our computers with a secure ID and then we use Pulse Secure. And once you're in Pulse Secure, then you can go on the internet. But then the companies lock down certain places that you can't get to. You know, it's like my company, if you try to Google Deborah Ray for Delegate, it, you can't get to it on my, uh, company computer. So I encourage you to look for, uh, systems that can do that to help the parents so, uh, other parents don't encounter this problem. Thank you.
Sarah Penrod.
Good evening. Sarah Penrod, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. And I am here to talk about the ESP stipend that it be, will be coming from MSDE. So, as most of us know, the blueprint didn't include anything for our education support professionals. Through legislation, we were able to get it passed that they would receive stipends. Originally for this year, it was supposed to be five hundred dollars, but not enough money was set aside and now it was down to two hundred and ten. Currently, the situation is that local school boards have to provide MSDE the number of support professionals that they plan to provide this stipend to. It is a possibility that because there is only a set amount of money set aside for this, that if there are more support professionals than was bargained for, that little two hundred and ten dollars stipend will be even less. Now, I don't need to go on and tell you all of the important work that our support professionals do. Elaine already did that for me. Um, but we, in, in a nutshell, we can't have a school system without them. There is absolutely no way we can run a school without any of our support staff. So in my opinion, they deserve a lot more than two hundred and ten dollars. They deserve more than five hundred dollars. They need thousands of dollars to make up for the lack of pay that they are receiving now. So I am here to ask you, the board, to consider every single one of our people that fall under the support professional contract to receive that stipend. And if the money we don't receive from MSD is enough for us to find the rest of it so that we are equitable across the board with our support professionals. And hey, you know what? If we can make it to more than two hundred and ten dollars, that would be even better. Tammy's somewhere cringing. But that's what I'm here to talk about. Please, all of our support professionals deserve that stipend and even more. So please let's not exclude anybody in our accounts. And hopefully here in the next month or so, I will be able to celebrate with my ESPs that they received a whole two hundred dollars for Christmas gifts. Thank you.
That's all, ma'am.
Great. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval for minutes, of minutes for October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, personnel teachers. There are no A and S appointments. Um, and the last is, uh, Department of Maintenance, HVAC, and refrigeration repairs. And so I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. So you have two action items this evening. The first is a contract for kitchen refrigeration services. Ms. Doring. And our IT support.
Yes, please help.
Yeah, let's make sure we have this lined up.
Glad I have my bag.
We should, we should be, we should be fine, so. So we're just gonna. So actually, you can, you can just page through it, up and down.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. And we're sent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'm here to request the approval to award projects under twenty thousand to AC Mechanical Services Incorporated. And also to request approval to award, uh, to award pre-qualifications for projects over twenty thousand to AC Mechanical Services, Hancock Refrigeration Company, and Brothers Mechanical Services. The Department of Food Nutrition Services manages twenty-eight kitchens, one warehouse with freezers, refrigerators, cooled serving lines, holding colers, and ice machines. In the past, this work has been done, um, in-house through our maintenance department. Um, food service had a repair person who has retired. We have posted this position several times, I believe eight now, I think it is, if I am correct. Um, and the position still remains vacant. So our equipment is aging. We do have plans in place to replace, uh, plans in place for replacement. However, we still have heavy usage during the school days and some op, some equipment that operates year-round. The ITB requested sealed bids from experienced and qualified contractors to perform both large and small commercial kitchen repairs, installations, and services. Require requirements, they must be able to respond within four hours for emergency calls and be able to respond within seven days for non-emergency requests. An invitation to bid was issued on August second and posted on email on Marketplace and SMCPS Purchasing Office Bid Board in accordance with the Annotated, Annotated Code of Maryland, Education Article Five, One, One, Two, and with Board Policy, Day, G, uh, Day, DJC and Regulations DJCR. The SMCPS Purchasing Office requested sealed bids from experienced and qualified contractors to perform the kitchen service repairs. On August twenty-fourth, three sealed bids were received and opened. AC Mechanical, Inc. of Rockville, Maryland was the lowest bidder and met the requirements of the solicitation. So our recommendation is that the Board of Education approves this agenda item as presented. Any questions?
I do. It's, no, 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 no. AC Mechanical, have you did, have they done work for us?
So we did actually, um, use them for some projects before we awarded the contract because we weren't familiar with them. Um, they had, they have done some work in our kitchens in the past few months.
Good, thank you, that's all I have.
No questions?
I just, how, how are they dispersed, like throughout the state? Because if they have to respond within four hours and they're in Rockville.
That was our first question.
Right, so.
Um, so they have local technicians. So what they do is their technicians are deployed from their houses. And they have, uh, technicians in the area. So, um, in the morning, they receive calls that they're working in this area.
Gotcha, okay.
So they, they have been able to respond to our calls within that timeframe thus far.
Okay. So then if they have, if they have the local technician that's here, then I would hope that that would possibly be the same technician that we would possibly always have, which would then become familiar with our equipment and be able to troubleshoot at some point.
And then eventually we'd be able to coerce them to come and work for us and then they'd apply for the position and then they'd be, yes.
That is the hope.
Okay. I have no more questions, but thank you, yes, go ahead, Mary.
No questions, thank you.
My questions have been asked and answered, thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
I just wanted to say thank you. Yeah.
All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the board approve award of contract SMCPS twenty twenty-three FS KRS for kitchen refrigeration services in two parts. Would award for projects under twenty thousand dollars made to AC's Mechanical Services Incorporated and pre-qualification for projects over twenty thousand awarded to AC's Mechanical Services Incorporated, Hancock Refrigeration Company Incorporated, and Brothers Mechanical Services.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have Apprenticeship Maryland. Mr. Even and Ms. Kelly.
Yes. This one should be straightforward. Come on, you can do it. You can do arrows, you can do this, you can do either one. All right.
Hello, um, most of you know me, I'm Bonnie Kelly. I work at the career, the Forest Career Technology Center. Um, we are here tonight to introduce you to, uh, one of our newest programs, which is the Apprenticeship Maryland Program. This program is a combination, well, we're working with the PTAUCS and Partnership. We've also had help with, from the Strategic Education Office at NOKAD. Um, they're trying to get us more contracts on base and doing things like that. Um, we have students in our school that are very skilled and very talented and we have employers in our community that need help. So this apprenticeship program is combining those two. Most of the employers, you know, will contact us and then we're able to work it out. The, um, they tell us what they're looking for and if we have something in our school, one of our fourteen programs that are participating, we can match a student up with them. So there's a lot of, um, requirements, I guess, that we have. We have to be very careful about where we're placing students, um, and, you know, who, who they're gonna be working for. So we're gonna, it works with the Maryland High School graduation because the kids, not only do they earn money, but they earn credits. So this, this is an approved program through MSDE that is a completer program. So it does work as a completer program for our students. They have to work a minimum of, the students have to work a minimum of four hundred and fifty hours in the course of the school year. So it's a, it's a big commitment on their part, um, but they do get paid and they do get credits. And this is one way that we can support the new changes that are gonna come in with the blueprint from Maryland, which I'm not super familiar with, but some of the things I've heard, it's gonna be a lot of work, so.
This is well-aligned to it.
Yeah.
A great deal of work has been done and it is good work that's well-aligned to the blueprint.
Yeah, so we are, we're on our way, I hope, in the right direction. So we started the program, we ran a pilot, um, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, we had six students out and I believe four employers. Um, unfortunately, due to COVID, we had to bring them all in. So the kids had to, um, and we had to end it in March. They did complete that year, the state understood what was going on, they, those, those students did complete. And then in twenty twenty and to twenty twenty-one, we really weren't sure what was gonna happen. And we were all there, so we know what was going on. Um, but we ended up placing, um, six students, which really surprised us. We placed six students during COVID with, I think, five businesses. Um, and that was just the beginning of, things started to turn around. And I have to say, that year, uh, in the state, we were like one, top one or two with students placed with. with students placed with our six little students. Most of the schools did not get students out that year. 2122, we went up to 13 businesses with 20 students. And then this year, we have 26 businesses with 39 students placed. So we've... Our goal here was to grow this program slowly. We've seen what happens when you grow it too fast and you don't take the time to do it correctly. We feel like growing it slowly as we have that we are doing it correctly. Our employers are happy, students are happy. It seems to be we're happy with the way the program's going, so I think it's working out very well. We have a total of 35 approved employers right now. Not every employer's gonna take a student every year, and we understand that. Some of these smaller businesses, they may take an apprentice one year, hire them, and then they don't have a spot for another couple of years. A couple of our employers have been with us since the very beginning. They take three or four a year sometimes. So 35, which we are hoping to grow that.
And we're very proud that SMCPS is one of those...
Yes, SMCPS is one of our employers. They have four of our students right now working at SMCPS. So a couple of different ways that we get our employers. The Patuxent Partnership is working very hard in trying to make those connections with the base, you know, the contractors and government. So they are... There's contract things that they have to work out to get positions for apprentices, and they are doing, they're working on that. They... We have actually, I think, seven students on, between Pax River and Wolf right now, working on the base. Actually, they get on the base and they go to work. So we have several with contractors also that are off-base. The Department of Economic Development's on board. She's been involved helping us with field trips and promoting our program whenever she can. We have promotional videos that our SMCPS media has created that we give to employers to try and sell them on it. We have brochures and things like that. And then a lot of times, the employers kind of reach out to us. And this has been going on for many years. Many years, we've had employers contact the Tech Center and say, hey, we need people. What can you do to help? Well, now when they're contacting me, I'm saying, okay, well, that's great. We need employers. And then I try and turn them over into apprenticeship employers, which has been working very well unless they have that 18-year-old... Unless there's a serious 18-year-old issue, I can't place a kid there. But that's been working well. So, and you can see, we offer a lot of different employers now. This year, we were able to add hotels and restaurants, which is new for us. But for the state, when we look at the top five employers in the state, education, I believe, was one or two. So education, manufacturing, hospitality. I'm trying to remember, there was two more. But they're all... Those are the main ones. And I was surprised to hear education was getting so many because it's hard to get everything placed. But we have excavating companies, manufacturing. We have some of the government engineering firms on base. St. Mary's County Government, we have one of their departments. And of course, St. Mary's County Public Schools. And you see the two quotes, too. That, Precise, is one of our government contractors. They've taken two of our IT kids, and they made these little ads, I guess, and tweeted them out and put them on LinkedIn. And the kids were pretty excited. It's really neat, and they're loving working at that company. Some of our other apprentices, just to give you an idea. So the one at Platform Aerospace with the welding hood on, he actually was apprentice last year. He has been hired on at Platform. In fact, we just did a field trip there with our engineering kids, and he was in there working away, you know, and got to say hi to the kids. So he was hired on full-time. Our other platform, we have four students at Platform right now. And they just came and did presentations to our other students, and they're loving it. The Front Porch, I love this one because Ryan is our apprentice in the red shirt. And Jordan Walker was a student at the Forest Center many years ago and has gone to culinary school and is now a pastry chef. And she actually manages that restaurant. And then Jay Brown, Escavating, and WM Davis. They have two of our students this year. They got on board last year with two, love them. All of our kids, they've been hired. One of them's still in high school, and they've already hired him. And they have him working, you know, trying to keep him. And then Leonard Town Collision Center is our newest employer that we just brought on. And Kylie's working there. So it's a lot of great opportunities. This is just a hand, small snapshot of what we have available. This is a letter from TPP. So the reason we're here today is we do have this wonderful program, but we need to grow it. And at this point, growth is no longer possible because of my position and what I do. I am the St. Mary's County Apprenticeship Coordinator. I also have many other jobs that I do at the Forest Center. We do have part-time help from the Patuxent Partnership. So Mary Jane Self, which some of you may know, was an employee at the Tech Center for 20 years. She retired and became a part-time apprenticeship person. So she helps me monitor the students, which is great because she can go out. So where I'm in the building doing the backside of things, you know, we're doing presentations, we're getting the students involved, we're getting them set up for interviews, we're doing resumes with them. Once we get them placed, Mary Jane will monitor the students. Every 30 to 35 days, she meets with every single student and their mentor to find out what is going on, are things working well? We have a rubric we follow, mostly on soft skills and employability skills. This is our way of letting the business know that we're not dropping a kid on their doorstep and walking away. And it's also, you know, a safeguard there for the students, too, to know that, hey, we're here, and if you need us, please just get in touch with us. Sometimes there's some corrective measures she has to take at those meetings. But we've had it where a student may have one or two things that needed to be corrected. She has a talk with them, they talk with the mentor. The next time it's corrected, and that's what we want. This is a learning experience in many more ways than one. We want them to be employable, we want them to have skills. So between the two of us, this is how we're going back and forth. But we're both doing this part-time. So TPP has found, had, I guess, got a grant for some money, and they are looking to transfer some of this money to SMCPS to help pay for another coordinator, full-time coordinator, that would be able to help me. I would stay part-time, continue my other jobs at the Tech Center, and we would have a full-time coordinator along with the TPP coordinator. So we're hoping that will grow the program. We'd like to grow the program by 30 students, which would pretty much just underdouble us. We need someone to go out, we need recruited, we need to recruit employers, and then us in the building working to recruit the students. So it all comes together. And one thing I did forget to mention is that we are number two in the state this year for apprenticeship. So the number one school has actually been in the apprenticeship program since 2016. They ran the pilot for the state. So they're a few years ahead of us even, so we're gonna catch up. We're gonna get in, that's my goal. So the numbers, they've funded a position for $100,000, fixed charges for $50,000. So we're asking that SMCPS be able to accept the $150,000 to go towards the apprenticeship program and get another apprentice coordinator on board.
So the... So thank you very much, Ms. Kelly, for all the work that you do, for all the work that you do as the apprentice coordinator, but also as vocational services support teacher and all the other responsibilities that you have at the Tech Center. The Patuxent Partnership, so on our side of the house, within the school system, Ms. Kelly is amp, as well as all of the others. MJ Self, when she retired, is over with the Patuxent Partnership's side of the house. And Mary Kay Myers also assists as well. So we're going to... This is an exceptionally generous donation and partnering from the Patuxent Partnership of $150,000 this year and $150,000, a pledge of $150,000 next year. So we would use these funds to bring on a full-time, 12-month coordinator on our side of the equation in St. Mary's County Public Schools. And that would be this year and next year. And by that time, we will have grown, we will have the blueprint, we'll have flourished, and everything will be fantastic. And it'll be wonderful. This bridges us into that moment. It also, there's a pledge letter that's in board docs as well to fund another four apprenticeship positions within St. Mary's County, so we can take four more of our students and have them apprentice in one of our divisions or departments within the school system. And just to give an idea of what that cost is, each apprentice, 450 hours at minimum wage is a little over $6,000. So these are not small sums of money. So I can't say enough about the Patuxent Partnership and the way that they have always worked with St. Mary's County Public Schools. But this is the most substantial, one-time targeted partnering that they have done to date. And I have, we have great expectations for what this is gonna mean for our system, for our students, and then also for our larger community of, you know, the whole concept of grow your own and really give kids the experience of being professionally employed in a, with an employer, where you're not just... This isn't simply a job. This is truly developing your skill set so that you are ready for professional employment. It's very, very, very exciting and good stuff. So we are seeking that you would approve the donation of $150,000 this year and $150,000 next year. So if you have any questions.
But right now, we're only approving the money for this year.
This year?
Next year, we'll go into the budget.
Yes.
So we will approve that in...
Yes, through the budget process, yes.
Don't confuse anyone.
No, no. So on the table right now is $150,000 for the school year, fiscal year 2223, yes.
Just making that perfectly clear.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right, does anyone have any questions? What else?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you so much because just within this presentation alone, I saw plenty of familiar faces, of friends who are in this program. And I know plenty of people who are really invested in their jobs that they've gotten through this. And I know last year, I had a friend who worked at Platform Aerospace. And it's just, it's really cool to see them, you know, be adults while we're in high school. So yeah, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Right, they get a first shot at adulting.
Yeah.
It's still rent-free.
Rent-free adulting, that's pretty great.
The only question I have is for those apprentices that are working on the base, is there any impediment for security clearances that you know of?
So the only problem we're having with apprentices on the base is the IT students. So because they have to be 18 with a CAP card to get a security clearance. But the other ones that are on there, we have them at NOKAD Structures Lab, and we have them down at Wolf. They're not working on top-secret-type computers. The work they're doing is on a different network so that they're able to work. They can, once, the first day they go down, they get a base pass. That's good for the school year. So they're getting them on and off, it's not been a problem. We are having an issue with the IT students, but that's the only...
It's a nature.
Only place that we're having an issue with them. But actually, we have four or five IT students out this year now. It's just the employers understanding that they can work on other things besides the top-secret stuff that's there, yeah.
That's all I have.
So I want to tell you that when we went to our MAVE conference the other week, we stood back there, I know Ms. Bailey and I were standing there. We're only one of four school systems that have been successful in doing this throughout the state. There was a lot of questions from the school board members, you know, in other counties that were asking us about, you know, how our program worked.
I was extremely offended that St. Mary's County was not highlighted on the side with all the successes, right? So...
They had the failures highlighted, which was...
They have the smaller programs, Rita, is what they were. Even though they're small, they can still be successful, so...
Even one child in an apprentice program is a success, and that's true.
It is true, but I just was like really disappointed.
And we're shooting for 70, so...
So I perhaps was not as diplomatic as I should have been.
But we can see why. It is exceptionally challenging, and it requires a really productive relationship between the school system, a bridging partner such as the Patuxent Partnership or the, ultimately, the Workforce Development Board or something like that, and then employers. It is not, it requires a lot of cooperation.
Was, you know, here's a school system that has a successful program, but there wasn't any, like, hey, maybe you should talk to them. It was just like, this is what you need to do. Like, I just, I didn't feel like there was a lot of sharing, so...
We just want to quietly go about our business, take our $150,000 from the Patuxent Partnership, expand our programs, and give great service to our kids and community.
So do you have any partnerships in the medical field?
Well, and that's part of our expansion. So if we can get this additional person full-time help, we have six programs that are not covered at the Forest Center that we would like to expand. Three or four, three of them being the Academy of Health. So the Academy of Health, Dental Assisting, and the CCMA.
Yeah.
Program, Natural Resources, we don't, we are not able to support right now. I just don't have enough hours in my day or time to get out and get those employers. So I do have a list of businesses that we want to hit if we can get people to come help, but they are on our list to get into medical fields. Yes.
I know initially, we did discuss, we have the new health centers within the system. And we have a lot of students that are, you know, quite bright and a lot of expertise, and we hope we can provide some services to those areas as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have two questions. So once this goes through us and then the county commissioners, what's the timing for onboarding the project coordinator and the secretary or the assistant position?
Well, if the board approves today, we already have a job description already put in and plugged in, ready to go. So then we would probably advertise the position next week for three weeks and to close afterwards. We, of course, would not be able to bring somebody on and actually hire them until the county commissioners, we presented to the county commissioners and assumed that they would approve us accepting a donation of $150,000. So the target would be December, which would then mean that we'd bring somebody up to speed, have them ready to go. And in January, we could be looking at expanding and offering other opportunities.
Okay, all right. And then the fixed charges, the $50,000 is going...
Well, it's not only, it's for the position itself, related healthcare costs, and then also administrative opportunities. If we have, we might bring in some people part-time to do some administrative work as well.
Okay. All right, Mary?
I want to thank you so much for all the wonderful work that you're doing at the Forest Center, Mr. Egan and Ms. Kelly. I've visited there many times, and it's great what you're doing. I appreciate you wearing so many hats, doing so many different jobs to keep this program going. When I was in high school in the '70s, we had a work-study program where we went to school a week, and we were paid, and we went to work a week. And we had to interview for those jobs, just as you are preparing these students for the interviewing process and to be ready so that they can be hired by the company. I want to thank the Patuxent Partnership. They are an excellent community partner. They are always here for us. And each time they come, they usually bring lots of money when they come. $30,000, $50,000. They help with camps, the funding of camps for students who can't afford it. They are here for us, and I appreciate all that they have done for us over the years. And I want to thank our other partners, too. $150,000 is a lot of money, whether grant or otherwise, but they were able to obtain net funding to help our students. So I look forward to this program growing. I appreciate your desire to go slow so that you can go fast to do it right the first time. And this is a wonderful opportunity for our students to get real-life work experience and to work in an adult environment. So this fits in with the blueprint. This is what the Tech Center does, gets student employment. And once we get that position, that program coordinator on full-time, that'll take a lot of the weight off you, and then this person can devote, immerse herself to it full-time. And congratulations, St. Mary's County being number two in the state of Maryland. We will be number one shortly. They got a head start on us, but we will catch up. And it's nothing like good, healthy competition. So, and I want to thank the base and the other companies who have, who are really seriously involved in making this happen for our students. We are realizing that the trades are very important, as well as students going on to college. So they can start work right away after high school and start earning a nice salary. So thank you for all that you do.
It's wonderful to hear about the success you've already achieved, not just in the number of students that you've been able to place, but also the fact that so many of them have now rolled into full-time employment as a result of the internships that you were able to secure for them. I am thrilled by the fact that the Patuxent Partnership is not only providing this funding for us to be able to have someone who is dedicated to this as their full-time job, but also the fact that they are taking charge of ensuring that each of these interns is paid appropriately through their office. And that helps us as well not to, you know, further, uh, load the finance department, um, within the system with, um, the challenge of, of, um, all the paperwork that I know will be involved in payroll for students, um, so that's fantastic. The fact that, um, these are students who are professionally employed in a supported environment, um, I think is especially telling. So often, we hear from, you know, in, in the media businesses saying, oh, kids are not coming out of school, um, with the skills that they need. Not only are we showing that they do have the skills that, um, that businesses need, but that, that seeming disconnect between what a business expects them to be able to do when they walk in the door of their business, you know, no one is a mind reader. Um, and so, uh, understanding the specifics of that and, and having businesses understand how, uh, dedicated we are to making sure that the students are prepared, um, working with them, with their mentors, I think is, is a, a further positive for this program, and I really look forward to, um, hearing more about it as the time goes. I took the time to go to the Forest Center on Friday and, um, sat down with, um, Mr. Swick, um, one of the teachers there, and, um, and Mr. Boyle, the supervisor of CTE, um, as we talked about this program. Um, and, uh, and I look forward to expanding it even more. And I hope that, um, with respect to our natural, natural resources students, um, that they too can be hired by the base. Um, they have a very robust natural resources program, uh, on the base, and, um, I think it would be of great interest to the students because, um, being able to effectively ensure that, of the many things that the natural resources folks do on base, um, ensuring that, um, wildlife are being kept away from the, um, runways so that, um, there's not a, an unfortunate accident between, uh, an aircraft and wildlife, I think is a real positive. And I know that, um, the system that was set up by Kyle Rambo years ago is one that has been replicated across the country. Um, it was, uh, absolutely, um, just a, a force of nature, no pun intended, um, that, uh, that Kyle was able to do what he did, um, and had such an effective, uh, outcome. So, um, thank you for sharing this, and I look forward to, uh, you coming back and telling us more about the success when we have grown this program even more. So, thank you.
Thank you. So the Tech Center is where learning goes to work and can get paid, so that's, I mean, that's.
That's your new hashtag.
That's fantastic, yeah. Yes, paid. Um, that's great. Thank you very much for coming tonight and, and presenting, and now just, we need just an action item from the board.
Right, and I just, I don't want to minimize the work that the Patuxent Partnership does on our behalf either, in reaching out to all of those companies, and especially the contractors on and off-base, because they are a huge cheerleader and proponent of this entire program. So, you know, having the additional personnel will help, and I'm sure that Bonnie Green and her staff paved the way, uh, with a lot of people in order to have these companies open their doors to our students, so.
If you want to hire them, you have to, you have to start somewhere.
Right, but, I mean, but, I mean, I, I think they do a great job in, in speaking to the qualifications and the standards that our students have, so.
Absolutely.
All right, may I have a, a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented budget increase in the restricted fund budget for FY 2023, and approve the submittal of this budget amendment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we do not have any informational items. Does anyone have anything for board reports?
Thank you, your doc.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, um, let's see, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 9th at 8:00 AM, and we are adjourned.